We can go on and on. In security, we are now number three after Afghanistan and Iraq. And his president will be worst than them. So when you look at all this record, you need somebody with experience. Somebody that can, one was so divided today, that can unify the country.
And we will give an opportunity to go through your promises.
So I'm looking at the experience. If you look at the cumulative experience of Alajia Atiku, you know why at this time, we need somebody who has this experience of the unifier, that can bring the country together. And I will be there to support him considering the age difference.
When we talk about suitability of office, the biggest issue that comes up again and again, when people talk about your candidacy, is that of corruption. People allege that you have question marks around your integrity. So let me start by addressing that issue before we go into the question of your manifesto and the things that you want to do. Do you believe Nigeria has a corruption problem?
Certainly, Nigeria has a corruption problem. There is no doubt about that.
What in your view is corruption?
Well, in my view in corruption, corruption is the use of your privileged position to either enrich yourself or enrich your relatives or even your friends.
Okay. And so would it be fair for us to...
In other words, abuse of office.
So would it be fair therefore using that definition to examine your record in office vis a vis this definition? Starting with your time as a customs officer at the Apapa ports and the setting up of a logistics company that declaring and forwarding while you were in a custom officer? Would you consider that an abuse of office?
Certainly not, because it was an issue of share purchase. And at that point, it was very, very lawful for any public officer to purchase shares. And this is exactly... You must remember, I don't know how old you were, but you must... You must remember, there was...
I am not as young as I think.
There was the indigenization decree which was passed by the then military government, which allowed public officers to legitimately acquire shares in their attempt to indigenize most, you know, of the companies that were operating at that time, that were owned by experts.
Okay, let me try and see if I can get this right. Because the information in the public domain, it's not that this was an existing company in which you acquired shares. This is a company that you actually set up with an Italian shareholder, Mr. Volpi, and which you registered. And the primary job of that business was clearing and logistics.
I'm sorry.
At a time, let me ask, let me ask, and then you can clarify.
Go ahead, go ahead.
At a time when you were a customs officer, who was responsible actually for making sure that the business of clearing and forwarding was done lawfully and that Nigeria was paid duty according to all the rules that were laid down? Now, is that information that's in the public domain accurate or not?
It's not correct.
Okay.
Let me tell you. Nikotes as that time was not registered as a clearing and forwarding agency. It was a registered company to undertake logistics in oil and gas. And that is what it still does, no more, no less.
This is the same company that transformed and metamorphosized into Intels.
That's right.
And which in 2016, oh sorry, 2006, was given, extended 25-year concession in some key ports in this country. But more than that, it was given monopoly for the oil and gas sector at a time when you were the vice president of Nigeria.
Again...
Do you see that this could be a moral problem or not?
Again, you are very, very incorrect.
Okay, please correct.
Because the issue of monopoly was not there. There are still companies that we met in the ports that were doing exactly what Intels was doing. So there was, there is no question of monopoly. It's a complete misrepresentation of the facts. There was no monopoly at all.
Kalaba, Wari, Onne, all concessions to you and nobody else.
No, it's not all of Onne. It's not all of Wari. It's not all of Kalaba.
The oil and gas business, the logistics oil and gas business was you.
There was competition and there is still competition.
Now there is.
No, there was. There was still competition.
Okay, so...
You know, what you should have done was to make or conduct a research.
I did, I did.
They aware.
I did.
What was Brawal doing?
This is, this is...
No, I was asking, I was asking.
This is on your company website, by the way. This is no information from an outsider. I'm taking this from your company website.
But, but you should have also cross-checked to see whether what the company was saying is correct or not.
Your company made a mistake about the fact that they have a monopoly.
It's quite possible.
Okay. Let me turn to Mr. Obi. Because you have similar allegations against you of a conflict of interest. When you were governor of Anambra State, you invested in a brewery. You put money worth about 2 billion naira of the state money in a brewery, Interfact, I think, beverages. Your company Next, according to the Corporate Affairs Commission, is a major shareholder in this particular brewery. How can you justify that? That you took money belonging to Anambra State and the people of Anambra State and invested it in a business in which you are a major shareholder?
Thank you very much. I brought international brewers into Nigeria.
Sb and Miller.
I brought them into Nigeria. And as a governor of a state, they build a greenfield facility in the state. And they came to me and said, as our partner, we want you to own 15% of this company. And I said to them, no. Right now, I'm a governor of a state. I know the future of this brewery. I want the state to own 10%. And since I'm no longer involved in this company, they can own 5%. And they are putting $30 million of state money there is now worth $100 million. And it's still there. And it's still there. No other state in this country have such investment.
How much have you personally made from that brewery?
I have no investment there, not one naira.
No, 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 no. No, hang on, hang on, hang on. Next is a business that is associated with you. And according to the Corporate Affairs Commission, Next is a shareholder in this brewery.
Go to corporate affairs today. If you see Pito be as owner of one share, one, I didn't say one, one share, it doesn't exist.
No, Next. Are you disassociating yourself from Next?
Thank you very much. Next is a family company started by my own parents. As a son, as their own child, I ran it at a time when I became governor. I had nothing to do with Next to today.
So how much has your family made from the investment?
Thank you very much.
How much has your, no, this is a serious question. I'm sorry, I am sorry, I am sorry, please.
Very, just very good question.
Nigerians are watching this, okay?
Very good question.
Okay, let's ask this question. You took money belonging to Anambra State government and put it in a company in which your family has interest. That's what you're telling me?
No, let me tell you. Look at what you're saying. I bought shares in banks. Let me tell you what I did. It wasn't only in that that I invested. I invested $50 million of Anambra State money in power sector. I invested another ten, over several billions in banks, including banks where I have share. I was investing for the future of the state. It doesn't matter whether I have shares there or not. But so if the shares they making profit, so if I have an opportunity of building a future for the state, should I have done that?
Okay, so can we agree that in your view, as long as you are making money for the state, if some of that money finds its way into your pocket, it's not a problem?
Never, no, no.
Is that what I'm saying? No, I'm trying to get clarity.
No, no, let me, let me tell you. No, 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 let me, let me, let me clarify it.
Okay.
I left office. I left office in this country. I left office in this country, living in Anambra State, with an investment and cash of 75 billion naira. It's never happened in this country. The day I left office, the day I left office, I had infidelity bank, $56 million, 12 billion naira for Anambra State. And in Diamond Bank, $50 million, 12 billion naira for Anambra State. And in Access Bank, $50 million, 12 billion naira for Anambra State. Show me in the history of this country, where anybody have left 10% of them?
Thank you. And we are going to come back and talk about, you know, your track record as governor. But let me come back to Alajia Atiku Abubakar. In your manifesto, you have a plan for tackling corruption, which you've agreed is a problem in this country. What is it? I'd like to hear what you plan to do.
I have said that there is need for us to go by the adage of the English saying, which says, prevention is better than cure. We can have both going side by side. Punitive measures, preventive measures. And my point is that we should be able to introduce technology in our public service. We should be able to introduce technology even in the private sector. So that relationship between members of the public and the, members of the public and government is not personal. I gave an example of the United Arab Emirates, whose citizens are not as educated as Nigeria. And yet by introducing technology in their public service, they have virtually eliminated corruption. This is what to apply and you get approval.
Okay, so basically you want to...
So I really want...
Automate everything?
Yes, automate, you know, the public service and make sure that contact to contact, which brings about the tendency, you know, for corruption, that one is eliminated. If you eliminate that, then you would have succeeded in reducing the incidence of corruption to the barest minimum.
Okay, so I'm going to start taking questions. Because, you know, it's not just me talking and some of them we collected from people online and we'll take some from people at home. But let me start with Mr. Ayew Ali. And he basically said, will you make EFCC fully independent and mandate them to go after everyone, even your friends? How would you reform the criminal justice system and judiciary, given the lack of confidence Nigerians have in it to deliver justice against public officials and politicians who are corrupt? This is from Mr. Ayew Ali.
My quarrel with our judicial system is that there is too much delay. If we can shorten the delay so that justice is seen to be meted out immediately, the better for us.
What in your view is responsible for that delay? And how will you tackle it?
It's looking at the legislature and also the procedures being adopted by the judicial. We have to look at, we have to sit down, you know, with the National Assembly and with the judiciary itself. And say, look, I mean, you know that the cases we initiated in our administration are still in court? Do you know that? Now, where is the justice there? And we set up the EFCC. I in particular brought the piece of travel legislation from Brazil. And it was based on that draft that EFCC legislation was crafted. When it was eventually passed by the National Assembly, EFCC did not even have the money in the budget to start operation. I borrowed them 300 million naira from the privatization process. And said, we better get to work. The following year, when there was budgetary allocations, they repaid the money. So I believe the period that it takes, most of the convictions we are hearing today were cases that we started in our administration.
We are going to have to take a quick break. Please don't go away. Ask as many questions as possible. So before the break, you'd started talking to us about what you intend to do around the judiciary and agencies that are mandated to fight corruption on the basis of a question asked by somebody. I'd like you to go into a little bit more detail regarding that particular plan that you have. And this is particularly important in light of the recent issues around the judiciary that are going on in this country. And of course, the fact that for many years now, there've been allegations that the people who are supposed to administer justice are corrupt and selling justice to the highest bidder. So what sort of reform are we looking at if you become president of the judiciary, but also of the agencies charged with investigating corrupt crimes?
Well, I thank you very much again. I have already indicated to you the kind of reform I want to, you know, undertake. That reform has to, number one, shorten the period of investigation by investigative agencies.
But how will you do this? It's the how that I'm after.
You have to legislate. This is a country that is governed by rule of law. So you can only rule of law, you know, to approach issues. And therefore, you have to legislate. In other words, investigation agencies must have a time limit within which, within which to investigate. There must be a time limit within which to prosecute. And there must be a time limit by the judiciary to dispense justice.
Now, generally, financial crimes tend to be complex and complicated. How practical is it for you to say to a man who is investigating someone who's maybe taken money out of state coffers or who's been, you know, beneficiary of proceeds of crime, where maybe the chain is abroad in different countries, that they must do their work within a short period of time? Wouldn't you be denying justice by denying?
Why is it that other countries are doing it within a shorter period of justice? Are they denying justice to their citizens? Kaduria.
But there are no, what I'm trying to get at is that, so in other countries, it could take this much or it could take this much. We've seen them investigate crimes that have taken many, many years.
Yes.
And eventually bring people to book. In other words, there are no statute of limitations for certain types of crimes. What you seem to be suggesting is that you want to put some sort of statute of limitation?
Not necessarily. Because I don't like any statute of limitations. Because sometimes you let criminals go. Why? Why in this era of technology, what financial investigations will not be able to do within a specified reasonable period of time? I believe it is doable.
If you become president today, what about existing cases? What are you going to do about them?
I believe there will be need for dialogue between the various branches of government. Look, we are at a very, very crisis point in this country on the issue of fight against corruption. We can't afford delays. Before we review our procedures and our laws, I think there is need we do something immediate. And I believe everybody will understand if you really intend to fight corruption.
Would you consider an amnesty where you say to people who've been involved in corrupt practices that bring back money and we draw a line and then going forward, we begin to implement APC?
Why not? I give you an example of Turkey. Turkey gave an amnesty. And all the money abroad came back to Turkey. And the government said, when you bring the money, there is even no taxation. We want you to invest in manufacturing. We want you to invest in technology. We want you to invest in, we want you to invest in real estate. And look at Turkey today. It's like any other European country in terms of its development. And then they drew a line. Why not? We could consider it.
No, but have you considered it? It's a question I'm asking.
Personally, yes, personally I have considered.
Okay. You will realize that for a few Nigerians, this will be problematic.
Yes, it will be.
Because it sounds like...
It will be, but...
And a way of trying to allow those who've stolen money to get away with it.
What have they been able to achieve? Let me tell you what we achieved when we came into the office to fight corruption. There was a recovery panel set up by President Obasanjo under my chairmanship, myself, the Attorney General and the National Security Advisor. And by calling various people who have been alleged to have stolen money, we recovered over 4 billion US dollars which we paid back into the treasury. If you were to go and prosecute these people, up till now, you will still be prosecuting them and that money would have been denied. So, I mean, there are a number of options.
Then the moral issue with that though is that in many ways, people say there are two problems. First is that corruption then looks as if it pays. And so therefore, people are not, there's no deterrent for people because they feel that if they steal, there's always going to be an opportunity for them to be able to make a deal and come back because they're bringing money back. And then you're sort of sending the wrong signals as well to people who are coming up. Because this is, we now have a culture and people are trying to change that culture.
It all depends on what you want to achieve. Whether it is moral rectitude you want to achieve or you want to see a fast development of your country from proceeds of corruption and so on and so forth. It all depends on what you want to achieve.
I'm going to take a few questions from the audience. The lady in pink, the gentleman over here with the glasses, right at the back, the lady in the black scarf, and then the gentleman, yeah, in the glasses as well. Four of you, then we'll come back to the candidates. Please keep it short because there are a lot of people that want to talk. Can you move a bit closer to the mic? Yes, thank you.
... and other prices. How are you going to ensure that the youth of this country are employed?
Okay. Thank you. And I'm going to have to suspend the audience questions because that mic has a problem. And so I'm going to just keep talking to the candidates until that mic is sorted. My apologies that we're having a technical problem. Let's, before, because, I mean, we're going to talk about your economic plan and all of that. But on the issue of corruption again, just one last conversation and then we move to the economy. The United States Senate Committee mentioned your wife by name in a case involving a German company, Siemens, which actually was fined and faced charges of corruption. What are your views regarding that specific case in which your wife was fingered?
My view about it is that my wife has not been indicted. My wife has not been charged. So because she has not been indicted, she has not been charged, I don't accept that view.
Do you feel the need to clear this? That there's like a moral burden on you to actually clear her name? Because the report was quite specific. I'm sure you know the report.
Yeah, I know, I am aware of the report.
It was quite specific about what it is claimed she did. And there was no doubt that the huge sums of money were found in her account. And a company was fined for paying her at least 2 million.
The company was fined for a number of offenses committed, not necessarily on the issue of my wife's account. What I can tell you is that my wife has never been indicted and she has never been charged. So there is no way you can hold my wife accountable. If my wife is an American, mark you. She is an American, there is no way they will not have charged her to court or indicted her.
Has she been to America since that report came out?
She has been traveling through America. She's been traveling to America. She goes and talks very, very regularly.
So you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just to add on this issue of corruption because you've been going on it, which is critical. But the question to ask, is it better to have an amnesty where somebody who said, we're not going to look at yesterday, bring back the money and invest it and have to rejuvenate the economy and create jobs? Or that you join another party and it becomes a safe haven and you can keep it? A follow-up. A follow-up.
This is...
Not just a follow-up, not just a follow-up. We have had issue of, issue of fighting corruption and the noise associated with it. Where you took over an economy that was 520 billion dollars, with a per capita for every Nigerian of 200, 2,500. And you abandoned about growing the economy and was busy chasing what seemingly does not exist in your goal. And then you ended up not recovering even 5 billion dollars.
Okay, so...
And the economy have lost 120 something billion.
There are two issues.
We're now where every Nigerian per capita is below 2,000.
Okay, so let's deal with it.
So we have all lost 500 dollars.
So let's deal with it.
While you're busy not adding anything.
So let's deal with the two issues. And the issue of the economy, which others critics will argue is actually a direct result of 16 years of a PDP government and we'll come back to that. But starting with the issue that you made about, when you said that, is it better to do an amnesty? Part of the problem that many Nigerians have is that actually they don't see any daylight between the PDP and the APC.
Not at all.
No, as far as they are concerned, you are the same.
Let me tell you, there is.
No, let me finish. The Nigerian politician seems to have no issues moving from one party to the other, depending on which party is going to allow him to contest. And the two of you sitting here are no exception.
Karan, there actually is. Who is an exception, if I may ask? Is it President Bouharé who had four parties? Who is an exception? I like, I like, I like what you said.
It is exactly the point I'm making. It's exactly, it's exactly... Because sometimes, sometimes, let me finish, let me finish. On this program alone, we've had two other parties that offer alternatives to both the APC and to the PDP. And the people who are followers of this party point to this particular issue as one of the reasons why people should vote neither for the PDP nor for the APC. They see you as the center.
Let me tell you the difference. The difference is that those who are in PDP today are actually cleaner because they're those who are not running away from persecution. The people remaining, those who have bad records have moved on to APC.
Those who have, those who have bad records have moved on to APC because they can't stand what is happening. So they've actually moved and to further.
Let's talk, let's have a serious, let's have a serious. This is a serious platform. Let's have a serious conversation.
Yeah, I want to be serious about it.
Let's have a serious conversation. Excuse me. Please have respect for Nigerians who are watching this. Thank you.
Let me be serious about it.
Okay, let's be serious about this conversation that we're having. You, apart from PDP, you were a member of another party, ABKA. And in fact, part of the, the, the criticism against you from a few people um, that I spoke to in Anambra, including newspaper articles that I researched, is that you had an opportunity to build ABKA, to be a third national party, and you abandoned it. And the reason you abandoned it presumably, or I was told, is because you felt it did not allow you to have, to play politics at the center. So I, I'm trying to, 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 to understand this issue of Nigerian politicians who.
No, what is wrong in that? If I have to go to London, Kadaria, and I have a vehicle and I can drive my car from Lagos from Onisha to Lagos and I find that I can't drive the same car to London and join a plane, what is wrong in it?
So, so we, we can agree, we, we can agree it is about what works for Mr. Peter.
No, 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 no. It's not what works for Peter.
No, it is for what works for Mr. Peter.
It is, it is, Mr. B, having an opportunity to help in building a better society. If I'm going to do it better here, I'll join here. Like I said today, PDP, actually, if you check, all you've said about Klaagia Tikuabaka is alleged, alleged, alleged. Even when he went to America, they shouted that before he comes back, your first question, he has since come back, no question. But I can tell you, I can tell you, if you go on the other side and you can see it everywhere. So issue of fighting. What does more, the record have gone from one thirty-six to one forty-eight. You said it's improved. They've come down to one forty-four, but we're still worse than we are today. Let's talk about corruption, even what is happening today. Where we don't even have a rate of extinction in this country.
Okay.
And you're talking about corruption.
Yeah, so let's start talking about the economy. Let me bring in Anajia Tikuabaka because you've been big on, you've been big on, um, your manifesto has been largely driven by.
Yeah, before I go to the economy, let me maybe put a, a, a closing, uh, idea to this corruption issue. You know, one other serious corruption that is facing us is elections regulation. It's also a form of corruption. You know the idea I have? Why can't we not have an election fraud commission? So that we bring to book any individual, whether he's a member of any political party or a member of, uh, INEC or even a member of the security services who infringes any electoral act.
But, but, but I think the courts are already, we've just had, um, INEC workers, um, that, uh, took bribes during the last election prosecution.
Like approaching the corruption issue because it is becoming a very serious issue. So if it requires us having a special investigation bureau, election fraud commission, why not?
Okay, so part of the difficulty, um, that faces Nigerians when they hear ideas like this about setting up this and setting up that is that it's not that these ideas are necessarily new. It's that we never seem to have the political will to actually see these things through. So people come in with ideas.
You know where the political is? You know where the political is? Here.
Why?
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 Because we have been successful both in government, in public and in private. For this country, let me tell you, Kadaria, let me tell you, Kadaria. This country requires a leadership that is pro-business, pro-private sector so that we can get out of this mess we have found ourselves. Twenty-one million young men and women unemployed who have never had this bad in this country.
Okay, so let's talk about that.
This, this, this.
Let, let, let's talk about that. Let's be quite specific about that. What are you going to do about that? You keep talking about making Nigeria better in specific terms. Because talking about the economy in terms of private sector led seems as if you're trying to build a government for the rich, by the rich. Where are the plans for the poorest of the poor? I want to hear those plans.
Now, you see, we had more people in the middle class bracket during the PDP administration than we have in the APC administration of today. The middle class is completely eliminated.
I'm not necessarily.
And you have to, and you, you, and you, and you have to have a middle class before you can uplift the ones in the bottom. Because it doesn't just happen like that.
So essentially, if you become president, uh, come, uh, May, if you're sworn in and you win elections in February, Nigeria's poor people have to wait a little while for you to build it. So I'm trying to understand.
No, 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 no.
So, so please.
Are you a socialist?
No, I'm not, but our, our people, our people, everybody agrees that the situation of our people is very dire.
Very dire.
Right? And that, um, the gap between the rich and the poor and inequality is growing. And I'm trying to understand what you as a president will do for the poorest of the poor. I'm kind of clear that your government and your plan, you have a place for businessmen. You have a place for international investors. You have a place for anybody with a bit of money that wants to do some work.
Did you read?
Do you have a place for the poor of Nigeria?
Yes, do you read our policy on agriculture?
I'm trying to look at it now, but it's short on the how. No, it's short on, it's short on the how. It's short on the how.
Yes, now.
And it's not that different from what has been done before.
One of our major plans is to create jobs. And the greatest job creation sector in this country is the agric sector. And our agric policy seeks to really empower the farmers to be more commercially oriented where they cannot, we have a system whereby they will be supported and assisted, you know, to be. I have never seen a.
How is it different from the current Uncle Borua's program and Nisra, which is being run out of poverty?
But the Uncle Borua's go to KBNC, go to KBC, whether it's not fake, it's fake.
I love it, that, that's not what some people say. You go, you go to KB to see the rice farmers as well.
Yes, you have the rice farmers, but how many of them? Few of them like that. Instead of them to expand.
Okay, so it's the same program, but you would just do it better.
In fact, the, the PDP was doing it better when we introduced, when we introduced the purchase of fertilizer on your mobile phone. And we had, our, our agricultural output was much higher than the present administration.
Okay, let me ask about, because I'm, I'm really concerned about your manifesto as it, it, it pertains to private sector-driven economic growth. Because your policy document talks about lifting up to fifty million out of poverty by 2025. But again, I'm, I'm not sure that I am, I am understanding the how. The how is a little bit, you know, iffy.
Okay, okay, let, 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 let me, let me give you just one illustration, what I tried to do, you know, local. Kadaria, I set up a few years ago, a microfinance bank. I brought in somebody from Bangladesh. You know, when it comes to the issue of microfinance, they are the best experts in the world. And I told him, look, I want to move families out of poverty and I want you to dedicate eighty percent of your loans to women. Do you know how many families we have lifted out of poverty? Forty-five thousand. If, if, in Adamawa State, in the northeast. So if in that small area, I could lift forty-five thousand families out of poverty through my one single microfinance bank, which is now going to be a regional micro because it's so successful, because the recovery rate is ninety-eight percent, because these women are paying.
So the, the, yeah, the, the.
It's, it's, it's quite possible you lift people out of poverty through empowering particularly women.
And yet, Adamawa still remains one of the poorest states in Nigeria.
Yes, but, but why, why?
They've had you, a man who's been vice president for eight years, um, someone who.
Kadaria.
I am going to ask the questions no matter how you shout, so you might as well just let me talk. I am going to ask the questions.
Ask.
So, so, so the, the, Adamawa still remains one of the poorest countries. And therefore, when, if you talk about people who want to look at antecedents, because you kept talking about your record, your record, your record. And so it's a fair question for people to ask. If your home state has not seen an appreciable change as a result of your major, um, sitting in an office of that of the vice president, why should we believe you would do better for the rest of Nigeria?
Again, you have got it wrong because you have tried, you didn't try to compare. What was it before and now?
Give, give us the numbers.
I, I may not be able to give you the numbers, but today.
So I can tell you.
Oh, well, you can tell me, but then you have to convince me that you are, you have the right, uh.
I, I have the numbers. So Adamawa has, for the last twenty years, come in sort of twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven in the index of poor states in Nigeria. It hasn't shifted much, maybe one place in the last twenty years.
Then it cannot be one place in the last twenty years. It must, it must be maybe in the last maybe ten years.
No, I'm talking about twenty years. I looked at the numbers before coming in here. And because it's one of the things that I wanted to talk to you about.
But it has shifted.
Seeing as it is your state.
But it has shifted.
A little.
So one single individual is able to make that shift. So imagine, if it is, if it is.
But, but isn't that part of the problem actually? That.
How?
In all your influence, you've not been able to build another you in Adamawa or someone close to you.
Do you know how long it took me?
That is all about you.
Do you know how long it took me to be what I am? Do you know from what background I came?
Okay, so I was told when I was researching this that there are two major employers in Adamawa. One is the state government and the second is you.
Yeah.
And part of the conversation we had was how come? The, you know, economy of Adamawa is not be getting bigger enough. This is a place like you pointed out, rich in agriculture and a lot of other things. And yet people are stuck in poverty. They've had people in, at the highest possible office. And this is the conversation. And the same thing with Anambra. Because you talked about leaving money in your coffers. The problem people say is, yes, you left money, but actually the kind of things that you could have done. So you built roads. You built, these are like mundane things that anybody with a bit of money could have done. And that there's nothing tangible that could transform Anambra that you did while you were in office. How will you respond to that?
Let me go, let me go back to issue where you discussed about job creation and about what you said about Alaja too. It showed clearly that in Adamawa, the two major employer is government and him. Let me tell you what you've said. You've actually said that as an individual, he's made a success of his life. And using that experience, Kadaria, if a person can manage a cobo, if a person can manage a cobo, it can manage an arrow. You've shown a, you've shown success in her own little space. And using this experience, it wants to transform it into a national issue. The people who are there today and those who are arguing don't have such experience. So they don't have such experience. You cannot say of any other presidential candidate that after he stays, he's a major employer. Show me one. None of them. So you have none seen what I'm saying about his experience. It is this experience that you can, it is this experience that is going to transform. When you show the, when you mention issue of job creation, let me add to what you said about when he's going to do, create fifty million jobs. This is not rocket science. It's been done everywhere globally. Let me just give you an example. Within the last two years, India was the highest country with the highest people living with extreme poverty. In twenty fifteen, it was one seventy-six million. Nigeria was then about seventy. Today, Nigeria is above ninety. In fact, World Bank report this year, they were going to top hundred. We're getting worse. India have now moved from one seventy-six to seventy-six. So India, in two, only three years, have been able to pull out hundred million people out of poverty. Whatever they, they did to achieve that, we can learn and do exactly that. What we have today in government is that you have people who are capable of learning, becoming teachers. We can learn what they're doing. You know what Nigeria went to do recently? To borrow hundred million dollars for a city. Let's stop borrowing and learn what they are doing to improve their economy. Again, in issue of job creation, the easiest way to create job is to empower your micro, small and medium businesses.
Okay, but.
They're the greatest employer everywhere in the world.
You, you, you realize that this government actually does have programs doing that. And so, and so, and so the question.
Yeah, 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 let me tell you.
The question is always going to be, how is your program?
We are going to move.
Different.
Let me tell you.
From what is already being done.
Thank you very much. Let me tell you why, the difference. It took this government three years to even formulate a program. It will not be for three years. Atikuabaka already have a program. So it's going to move immediately to program implementation, not formulation. We took this for three years. And that three years was where they're trying to formulate what you can see have fallen like a pack of cards. Because if it took you three years to say, I'm going to achieve four percent growth, and you're not achieving two. You've even failed based on your own, your own exam, exam you set for yourself. People failed when you set the exam for yourself. And that is what is catching up here. It is this thing. That experience is, is had on a small scale. Isn't what is going to transform in a larger scale? And being that both of us will use direction, we've managed resources. If you have created resources and manage one, it's easier for you to further expand that. And it's very easy. If you don't move this economy where it is private sector driven, you're wasting everybody's time.
And so ideologically, ideologically, you are clear, both of you, that the programs you are going to be pursuing are going to be private sector driven.
That's what is obtainable in the world today. Because it's simple.
Virtually, virtually, virtually every part of the world is in trouble today because they've realized that capitalism has left a lot of people behind.
Which people are in trouble?
Hang on, I'll tell you.
Which of them? Tell me.
I'll tell you. You have problems in America because there's a percentage of Americans that lashed out because they felt left behind. So there's a general concession.
There's a problem, there's a, there's a problem.
Let me finish, sir, without your respect. Let me ask my question, please.
Yeah.
The point I'm trying to make is that generally, this rapid capitalism in pursuit of money is believed to be leaving a lot of people behind. And it's leaving, it's, it's growing the gap between the rich and the poor. And, and I'm trying to get clarity from you whether you, you understand the issues associated with the sort of kind of, uh, economy that you want to pursue, especially in a country where already there are major issues of poverty.
Kadaria, leaving people out of poverty had been private sector driven. China has driven four hundred and thirty-nine million people out of poverty within fifteen years. They can, they only achieved it because they took the private sector lead. They can, they only achieved it because they took the private sector edge. Do not use America and compare, every society has its own little problems. You cannot use the little problem of America to compare what is happening here.
You said I should give you the answer.
No, but if you, if you ask Nigerians today, do you want to live in America? I can tell you, the present condition, ninety-nine percent would, would throw in their passport to be and leave Nigeria. If you ask American, Americans, do you want to come to Nigeria? Nobody will want to go because even Bloomberg have said, this is the most stressful country to live in today.
Do you believe that Nigeria's problems started in the last three years? Or do you sincerely, and can look at Nigerians in the face and tell them that nothing they are experiencing, it has nothing to do with things that have happened in the past sixteen years?
Let me tell you, as a finance person, there's something called a discounted position. What you see today, sixteen years of PDP, which is far better than what we are seeing, was a discounted position. That's what they were telling us.
Please explain discounted position.
Now, I wanted to say, if you come to me, if you come to me, okay, let me give you. In twenty fifteen, APC was going around saying, the country is broke. The country's economy is collapsed. There's insecurity. There's this. They promised us to make Nara one-to-one.
No, 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 we, we know, we have to do fact checks when we're doing this.
One minute, one minute. Let me finish, let me finish.
Let's be serious now. We're having a serious conversation. Come on.
Let me finish. That's what the promise was.
Come on now. Come on now.
Okay, let me finish. They promised that they will end Boko Haram in six months. They promised that they're going to give Nigerians power. They promised issue of well-being forty-seven era. They promised, go and check what we see today. All we're saying is, let's look at your promises and know those. They promised to create three million jobs.
It's, it's, it's...
And we lost thirty million jobs.
Yeah, okay, so it's, it's difficult because obviously if, I, I'm not an APC. And I can't keep trying to, I can't keep, no, I can't keep trying to, to, it would, it would be nice if we focus on what you are doing. The simple reason being, anytime I push back at you, it will look as if I'm trying to speak for the APC and I don't want to.
Okay, let me tell you what we're doing.
So, so exactly. So let's focus on what you are doing.
Let me tell you what we're doing.
And why it is different from what obtains.
Thank you. I have actually told you where we are today, that we have seen record poverty in Nigeria. Where we are now the poverty capital of the world. And I believe that with the policies of PDP, Atiku's government, you continue to see annual reduction in that position.
Let's take a few questions. The people I called earlier, they need to finish up. I hope these mics are now working. Huh? Try it and see. They should be on.
Hello?
Yeah, should be on.
Hello?
Hey, keep working.
Okay. Good evening Nigerians.
Please, if you can be quiet so we can actually hear them.
Um, my name is Obakar Tawo Musa. I'm a pharmacist and a Nigerian with a passion for a better Nigerian. And I'm directing my question to Alledja Atiku Abubakar. And it's regarding employment and job creation because that's what you keep mentioning. And, um, as a successful businessman, I'll put it this way. I'm an applicant applying to work in your successful company. And after passing through some processes, your HR department, that's the human resource department, asked me to provide a referee from my previous place of work to enable me to secure the job. And I have something to say. This is the response of my employer whom I've worked with for the past eight years. And this is what he has to say, and I could. His propensity to corruption, his tendency to disloyalty, his inability to say and stick to the truth all the time, his propensity for poor judgment, his belief and reliance on marabat, his lack of transparency, his trust in money to buy his way on all issues and his readiness to sacrifice morality, integrity, propriety, truth, national interest, national interest for self and selfish interest. My question is, if, if my previous employee forward this reference to you, will you employ me?
Okay, thank you. We get the question. We get that. That, that's fine, that's fine. We have the question. Please, can we have some silence? Please, please, please.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Shankula, Your Excellency. You have already identified, you have already identified, you have already identified insecurity as a major problem in this country. Um, a number of factors usually account for this insecurity, but my major concern here is the problem of the herdsmen and farmers clashes all over Nigeria, particularly affecting the states of Benue, Araba, Lito and so on and so forth. Politics is about interest, Your Excellency. Everybody will want to vote you because they know that you have...
Please ask your question, right? Look at the queue behind him. Ask your question.
Your Excellency, my question, sir, my question, sir, is that I want to know exactly your blueprint on how to deal with the problem of herdsmen and farmers clashes in Nigeria, particularly, sir. As a foreigner man who is also in the business, from your video clips, was also in the business of rallying cattle. And as a thief man, the great shatter of the people, the victim of the thief, I want to know particularly, sir, how you intend in your blueprint, how to end this problem?
Okay, now before the next person, let me make it very clear. I will get those mics switched off if people don't ask their questions and sit down because you have to be considerate. Look at the queue of people who want to speak. So please, can we be very, very considerate? Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Jake Epelle. I'm the CEO and founder of the Albino Foundation. My question to you, sir, borders on health, access to health. I've been diagnosed of skin cancer. I have no hope to get immediate cure. What would you do? The person that have been given the opportunity to ask you this question before millions of persons with albinism, what would you do to make sure we have access to quality healthcare? Thank you.
Okay, let, let's come back and take those questions before we go back. There, there are three. The first was basically a quote from your former boss, President Obasanjo, describing you. And the question was whether if you were an employer and somebody sent that reference for someone that you wanted to employ, whether you would give him a job, implying that, given what Obasanjo said about you, why should Nigerians employ you? The second question was to do with how you would deal with the herd of farmer problem and the third one was on health.
Thank you very much. When, if the referee has changed his mind and says that the applicant is now the best applicant and I recommend him for the job. So...
So let's, let's...
So, so what's, so what's, um...
Let's, let's, let's interrogate that a little before we pass through. Let's interrogate that a little. If, if someone, you've done something to someone that, and they've forgiven you, for example, it doesn't mean the crime didn't take place. It doesn't mean that what was said to have happened didn't happen. It just means the person has decided to move on or that you are the lesser of two evils if they are comparing you to another person. Some of his allegations were quite specific. You need to...
You know, Kaduria, you must know that nobody has been investigated by Obasanjo more than myself. If Obasanjo could not find me guilty of any wrongdoing, then I don't think those, you know, statements stand.
Did he lie about you?
I'm not here to say that. I'm not here to say that.
But it's, it's curious.
It's, it's up to my employers. It's up to my employers to say or not. But if I was the most investigated politician or public officer and I was not found wanting, then it's up to, it's up to, it's up to my employers to believe what the, what has been said or not.
Okay, next question. Yes, did you want?
Just, just to make comment on this. You've seen in football today where referees have taken time to look at videos seriously and decide that their action they took yesterday was wrong based on replay. The, the referee has changed his mind because he has seen the replay. That's what he has done.
We're going to have to take a quick break. Please, don't go away.
The beauty of democracy rests in the power the system has given to the teeming population to elect an eligible candidate of their choice for any political office. But the right to vote is not a license to kill. Democracy is government of the people, by the people, for the people, where majority carries the vote. It is not a do or die affair. Say no to violence. Your whip on at the pole is your permanent voter's card, not a dagger. Your future is in your hands. You have the right to lead. Don't cause trouble. Vote wisely.
My name is Natuba. You don't do, I don't tire for all the things you hear. You dey hear no pata. Share you think say na only you feel.
Election, they very important.
But it go come and it go go.
Nigeria go take it back. Make we no fight for election.
Because na all of us go so para. Election na do, no be die matter.
Vote, not fight.
Election no be war.
A popular saying in Nigeria goes, that at a time a cockerel matures, it begins to crow to tell the world the time of day. This makes a crucial premise for all of us who have come of age, the youths, to lend our voices to a nation set to flip a new page, like the chance to vote and be voted for, whether being a youth, a woman or a person with disability. And to do this in unity and to anyone who hasn't been confident enough to exercise these rights, I beg, step out of the dark and come into the light. I mean, your participating in the electoral process is significant in moment to behold, like that cock crowing in the morning to tell about the difference. No sit on look. Do something that will count today and be in tomorrow's books. The elections are coming. Register for and get your voter's card, your power card as a citizen and especially as a young lady or lad. Lend your voice, use your voice, talk, say and tell the world the time of day.
Welcome back to the candidates. You are watching us and we are speaking to the, to the candidates of the People's Democratic Party. And before the break, there were a few questions you were trying to answer. Um, there's one on health and then one on the farmer-herd clashes. So maybe we can start from there.
Um, thank you very much, um, for asking the issue of farmer-herdman clash. I believe that the best solution to the farmer-herdman, uh, clash is to try and enlighten our herdsmen on the use of feeding lots. And these feeding lots can conveniently be established all over the country. Because we have a number of, you know, factories that are producing animal feeds, livestock feeds. There is need for an extensive public enlightenment to these herders to adopt this solution. It's a way, you know, to minimizing as much as possible the herdsmen-farmers clash. It is an old conflict dating back to the years of the prophets. America has faced the same thing. Eventually, the solution they found was the establishment of feeding lots all over the country. So there, even the herders will find that their cattle have more milk and more beef. And therefore they can earn, in fact, better income or more income if they adopt that system.
So explain the system a little bit more. Is it something that you put on the normal grazing routes? How does it work? Because these are people who are nomadic.
Yes.
Who are used to moving. So maybe you can explain a little bit more.
You know, how I, I explain is that each, you know, let's say state government through extension services, you know, can enlighten the herders. It used to happen before, only that it's been abandoned. And if you enlighten the herders and then you teach them how they can remain in one place with the feedlots, it costs a little bit of money, but the money they are, the income they are going to generate from the milk and the beef will far, you know, exceed, you know, their, their expenses in buying the, the, the feeds, the livestock.
So it's going to be a change of life for them. They become sedentary instead of moving.
Yes, completely. It has, it has to be over a period of time.
But you realize that there are those who will not like that, that actually is their way of life.
I, I believe majority of, when we introduced nomadic education, at least we were able to get them to settle in one place, not until the nomadic education, uh, process or system was abandoned. And then they started roaming about.
Now, some states, um...
I have a guy who is today, I mean, a PhD holder. He started from nomadic school.
Okay, so in, there are states, for example, that have indicated they really do not want the presence of, um, herders within their land. And I, they've put brought in laws like the anti-grazing law in Benue. What is your position on that sort of law?
We have to look at the constitutionality of those laws. I'm not sure whether they come with the provisions of our constitution, which guarantees, you know, free movement and you, you know, the right to reside wherever you decide to live in a country and so on and so forth. So we have to look at this.
Okay. Now, talking about free movement, um, Mr. Obi, as governor, you deported beggars from Alambra State.
Departed?
That's, yes. You deported beggars.
No!
To acquire back to their state of poverty.
Never. Somebody deported from Lagos.
No, 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 you, no, you deported from Alambra.
Let me tell you.
So what happened?
I was, I was the person who complained about somebody deporting beggars from their state.
You never took beggars to acquire people?
In fact, they are welcome because they are citizens of the place. You know, my wife is so affordable. How can I deport people to their state? Every, people from affordable, people from affordable are welcome to my state.
So the, the, the information out there that you deported beggars was wrong?
I said...
No, I want, I want a straight answer.
Kaduria, I'm marrying one of the best women anybody can marry.
No, no, no.
I can't deport these people. That I brought them to Alambra City.
So did you ever deport any beggars to any other state outside of Alambra?
I have never in my life discriminated against any human being and I will never. If they actually have issues or disability, I love them because they're supposed to be cared by the society, is to show them love, not hatred.
Now, let me, because we've talked on the issue of insecurity, I think maybe this is an opportunity for us to talk a little bit more about it before we go to the question on health, since you've dealt with the herd of farmer clashes. Um, you, you talked earlier about the fact that, uh, this government came to power on three promises, including security. And you inferred in that answer, um, issues you had with the way Boko Haram is being dealt with, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to have a conversation... et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to have a conversation regarding the Nigerian army, for example, and the role that they are playing in fighting Boko Haram. What are your views regarding what is going on in the northeast, but also in places like Kaduna, where we've seen clashes between the army and Shiites? And that, you know, that whole thing about the army confronting them on the streets, including even here in Abuja?
Well, let me say on the issue of Boko Haram. I think I can only assume the complaints by the fighting military, you know, is the reason why we have witnessed setbacks. And that is lack of equipment, lack of welfare to the fighting troops, and so on and so forth. If that is the case, then we have to review and make sure that adequate equipment in terms of confronting, you know, terrorists are really made available, you know, to these ordinary soldiers who sacrifice their lives to keep us safe.
The allegation is that the hierarchy of the military is involved in corruption. We've read, you know, various allegations. They haven't been proven. Would you be willing to investigate the hierarchy of the military?
More than willing, more than willing. More than willing. More than willing. Believe me, if you are a commander and I have given you all what you require in terms of equipment, in terms of welfare of your troops, and then you are overrun, I will deal with you. I will ask you, you have failed, go. If you don't go, then there are consequences. We cannot continue to accept that kind of situation whereby, you know, commanders lose lives, lose equipment, you know, to terrorists, and then nothing happens to them.
What about the Shiite issue?
The Shiite issue? I do not see any role for the military there. If the Shiites have misbehaved, let the police step in. I just can't even understand how the military got involved there. They said because the Shiites blocked them. If the Shiites blocked them, all what you need to do is invite the police. Because it's, it's policing aspect. It's not a military aspect.
So groups like Amnesty International have repeatedly called for members of the military that were involved, both in the killings in Zaria, as well as the more recent killings in Abuja, to be arrested and prosecuted for murder and for, in some cases, they say genocide. Is this something you are willing to consider if you?
I don't know what evidence Amnesty International has. So I cannot work on that.
But you'll be willing to investigate?
I will be willing to investigate. For sure.
So specifically with the northeast problem, you've talked about equipment and more.
You know, welfare, training.
What else?
Training, you know. I mean, these are things that motivate troops. You know, good training, good equipment, good welfare.
Is the solution in your head a wholly militaristic solution or not?
Of course, it has to be, you know, a mixed grain of giving the right kind of political leadership and also the right kind of military leadership, you know, to confront the situation.
Okay, sir. The question on health, so that we can go back to the audience.
The question of health, we have not been investing in health. Just like I said, we have not been investing enough in education. That's why we find ourselves where we have found ourselves today. It requires more investment in health. And if you go into our, you know, policy document, you will find that we are committed to investing more in healthcare. And again, this is an area where I am also involved. Because currently I have, you know, an agreement with the Saudi-Jerman Hospital to set up a hospital here in Abuja. In fact, we have started, we have set up, you know, the consultancy, the clinical aspect of it. In the next one year or two, we'll set up a hundred base hospital. So you need again here to bring in private sector investment. Besides, you know, committing more funds, you know, to public health.
In, in countries where we've seen private health privatized, and the poorest of the poor don't seem to be able to do well because healthcare is very expensive.
I, I don't believe, I don't believe it should be privatized. I mean, it should be, you know, a private sector and public sector. It should be a mixed grain because our people may not be able, will not, definitely will not be able to afford. So governments should spend more money on healthcare.
Okay, because it sounds like you are thinking through it now as you are sitting here.
No, not thinking through it. Read, read our policy document. You'll find that both, you know, both approaches are advocated there.
Okay, so, so who will get the private sector care? Who will get the one from the public sector? I'm trying to understand the details.
Private sector, those who can afford, either through, you know, their own resources or through insurance.
So, so how will governments decide who to give healthcare to and who not to give healthcare to?
Governments should be able to know who are the lowest, you know, income ladder. We know, we know our poor people. We know those who can afford. We know those who cannot afford.
I'm trying to understand how to run the scheme. You know, there are like practical ways of rolling out programs like that.
Okay, you see, there is something that I have also instituted locally in my place, what I call the purpose fund. In other words, from time to time, I deposit a certain amount of money at the federal medical center in Yola and I appoint a committee of very credible people. I say manage it. Anybody who has come to this hospital and cannot afford to pay his bill, you take from that purpose fund. And take that nobody, nobody should come to that hospital without being treated. And it is working very, very efficiently. It's been on now for about four, five years. And it's not much money.
Let's talk about tax. Recently, it was reported that you paid an amount that people thought was very small for tax, given how wealthy you are. And we have established that city here. We've heard about your farms. We've heard about your logistics company. We've heard about recent your hospital now and all those other things.
I can tell you more.
Okay, so, 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 so how come your tax payment is so low and in your manifesto, you're planning to cut corporate tax and make it even lower for rich people like yourself?
Let, okay, let me tell you. All my companies are paying tax. You can go and verify that.
But you are personally wealthy.
The tax I am paying is what I earn from public purse. What I earn is corporate, is being paid by the corporate entities.
Ah, okay. So you've paid more taxes than what was publicized?
Of course, for sure, for sure.
Can you tell us how much?
Honestly, I wouldn't know. I don't, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money?
It's a lot of money.
Okay.
It's a lot of money.
Okay, now part of your.
The last, the last figure I've seen is a lot of money.
Okay. The manifesto that I saw also talked about cutting corporate tax.
Yes.
Please explain the rationale for that.
The rationale behind that is that when you reduce corporate tax, you give incentive to investors to come in and invest. And when they invest, they create jobs. And when those jobs are created, the people who get employed also pay taxes. So in, in all cases, where you effect or implement, you know, corporate, a lower corporate taxation, you have seen the GDP going up and up and up and up.
And, and yet, when I spoke to a few CEOs before coming to do this program, I, I'm not a business person, but I spoke to a few people. And what they said is that lower corporate tax in itself is not enough, that actually businesses are more concerned about policy.
Yes.
Infrastructure and the right environment. And that they might actually even be willing to pay higher taxes in return for these other conditions. And so that that in itself isn't enough.
They are right. You also have to look at this holistically. In other words, the police, you will find where we also talk of infrastructure, where we talk about power, where we talk about skill. All these things tend to definitely direct investors, ease of doing business and so on and so forth, tend to really direct investors where to invest. And by the time you take a holistic view of all these issues, for sure, you will see investments coming in.
It's time for another quick break. Stay with us.
The beauty of democracy rests in the power the system has given to the teeming population to elect an eligible candidate of their choice for any political office. But the right to vote is not a license to kill. Democracy is government of the people, by the people, for the people, where majority carries the vote. It is not a do or die affair. Say no to violence. Your whip on at the pole is your permanent voter's card, not a dagger. Your future is in your hands. You have the right to leave. Don't cause trouble. Vote wisely.
You don't do. I don't tire for all the things you hear. You dey hear no pata. She you think say na only you fit booga. I go show you.
You dey show yourself all these years. I just dey look you. This time, you go know the kind of procedure.
I've been watching as you dey try scatter my future. The future where I dey try organize for myself, small, small. Now, you dey try kill Abi.
Not to kill, scatter and destroy my brothers always dey your agenda, Abi. Oh, but you not fito, not this time.
I don't set my own agenda. I know how where your agenda go fit pass my agenda.
Because my agenda strong pass your agenda.
For this election, the agenda na. It's our future.
No violence.
Just vote. Set the agenda for this election. No violence, just vote.
The struggle for independence had been a long and tough one. Our founding fathers and compatriots sacrificed their comfort and even shed their blood. We cannot at this point in history afford to spirit away their sacrifices for immediate but temporary gains of today. Let us emphasize what unites and not what divides us. Working for the unity of purpose with a stronger vision for a better tomorrow. NTA, growing with the nation.
Election de very important.
But it go come and it go go.
Nigeria go take it back. Make we no fight for election.
Because na all of us go so para. Election na do. No be die matter.
Vote, not fight.
Election no be war.
A popular saying in Nigeria goes that at a time a cockerel matures, it begins to crow to tell the world the time of day. This makes a crucial premise for all of us who have come of age, the youths, to lend our voices to a nation set to flip a new page, exercise these rights, I beg.
Welcome back. You are watching The Candidates, a presidential town hall series brought to you by Dariem Media and the Nigerian Television Authority with the support of the MacArthur Foundation. We are in conversation with the presidential and vice presidential candidates of the PDP. A quick reminder for those watching at home, you can still take part by sending your questions using the social media handles scrolling across the screen. And let's dive straight actually into those questions from people at home because we have very little time.
Let me just make a little comment on this issue of tax.
Maybe you can answer it along with all these other questions because look at all the papers I have, yeah? So this is from Abdouhama Leeme, who says, "What moral high ground do you have to ask Nigerians for their trust in you to fight corruption when you are one of the biggest beneficiaries of corruption?" The other one says, "The federal government allegedly, the federal government under which you served allegedly spent 16 billion generating power without substantial improvement. How can you promise us that you are going to improve power?" Then I want to know your thoughts on the CJ saga, the circumvention of the law allegedly by Mr. President and the clear evidence against Onogun. What is the ideal outcome in your view to this situation? And then finally, maybe we'll take one more. Dear Alaji Atiku, is granting, is the granting of a private university license to yourself while in government a conflict of interest? And isn't it criminal that you left public universities in a rut just to build one of the best private universities in Nigeria? So these are questions from the audience that we have, and maybe we could take that.
Can I come in?
Yes.
Let, let me, let me, let me again tell you. Let me answer from the last one. He built a private university. Tell me who else among his class that built one? And to show you that he wasn't building the university for money, he built it in Adamawa. He had opportunity as vice president to take land in Abuja and build it, or build it in Lagos. He saw imperative of education for development and went to develop an area that shouldn't have been developed. I want us to.
Back up. Can I ask a quick question on education, please? Yeah?
Yes, don't, don't.
Let me ask a quick question on education. When you are in a country like Nigeria, where public education has become really poor, and I think virtually all of us here are beneficiaries of public school, the general hope is that people in public office would actually focus on fixing public schools. The same public schools that they benefited from are supposed to setting up private institutions that are only affordable to a few. Isn't that really an important issue to look at?
Let me help you. Under PDP, they started universal basic education. Even went to tax companies to put them 2%. Established that office to be able to educate the people. And was actually partnering with states in order to educate their people. Go and look at all the states that are doing badly today. They're for one party. So if you look at what PDP has done, because you look at the 16 years of PDP, like you've just said, they spent 16 billion and there's no power. One, that is lying. But let me even tell you.
This is according to a 2008 National Assembly.
Let me even tell you.
It's not from any number that we just.
Thank you very much. Let me even tell you. Two thousand, 16 billion.
Dollars.
Dollars. As of the time PDP was in government, at an approximate rate of 150, is 2.4 trillion. This particular government, this particular government have in the past, in 2015 and 2017, borrowed a total of 7 trillion, 428 million, and said it's for capital vote.
So, so, so they've done as bad.
No, no, no. Wait, wait, wait. Let me finish, let me finish. Let me finish.
They've done as bad as.
Now, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. I just want to finish. Let me just finish. They have borrowed 7 trillion, 428 billion, and said it's for capital vote. The capital expenditure, the capital expenditure in 2016 is 1.2 trillion. The capital expenditure in 2017, by them all, is 1.5. So assuming that was actually extended, there's almost 5 trillion unaccounted for to even further, to even further expand it under this.
But we're now talking about, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. We are now talking about what PDP did and now what APC did. So essentially, you're saying you did badly, they did worst. So Nigerians should be looking for a third option?
Thank you. No, no, no. Let me come on, let me come into that. Even part of those who were part of what you said that was bad, I said they've moved on to the desired.
Even part of those who were part of what you said that was bad, I said they've moved on today, decided. So those who are remaining here are those who are committed to doing better. Let me tell you what your power, power. APC has never invest, invested one kobo in power in the past four years. All they are talking now about, all you see anything about power today were those investments that PDP did. And even to implement it, they have fallen in it.
Okay.
So what they've done is that...
Is continuation a problem in government?
PDP can even show you where they expended those sixteen...
Is, is it your view that continuation in government is a problem? Meaning if you come into government today, will you truncate everything that has been started by a previous administration?
Let me tell you. Let me give you an example. You saw APC commissioning airports. They did not put one naira in those airports. It was, it was, it was loan obtained by PDP, counterparty funding fully paid. They only came and delayed the project and then now that the election is coming, they're commotioning. You saw them talking about train.
We've got ten minutes and we have a few questions, yeah? So try and...
Let, I was going to go to issue of tax.
Because I want to go back to Alaji Atiku.
I want to go back to issue of tax because you talked about tax.
Okay.
I'm taking his authority to say what I'm saying here because he is in charge and I'm taking his authority to do that. Now I'm saying, if you're talking about issue of tax and lowering tax, look at all the places where there's been fast development. Let's take issue of Dubai. It was a desert when they told everybody, no tax, nothing. The war came there. So when you lower tax, the war will come in. I think you're talking about private sector driven economy. You need the private sectors to come and invest.
So what will you use for your programs if you, you lower tax, you are a mono economy and yet you keep talking about these ambitious programs that you are going to run? Where is the money going to come from?
Let me tell you where the money will come from. This is what I'm saying. Let me tell you where the money is going to come from. And I'll use two economies in Africa to tell you. The budget of South Africa is one twenty billion dollars, fifty-five million people. The budget of Nigeria is thirty billion, one hundred and ninety-eight million people. What it shows is a missing link. The missing link is that South Africa have put their economy, knowing the difference and everything, that everything has to be given by private sector. So it reduces corruption. So instead of going to build airports, build ports where you have to put in your relations and everything to run them, you put it in a private sector hand where they can go to the capital market, borrow money, do it more efficiently, it helps the capital market to grow, you have the system. By that, you create more job, like what you were talking about.
Okay. Quick questions because I'm told, you know, they are in my ear telling me we're about to wrap up. And so I have to ask two very quick questions because you've raised the issue of privatization. You were the head of the Economic Council during your time as vice president. Some of the privatization that took place under your watch left a lot to be desired. And I'll give you two quick examples. Alskon in Iqota Basie, a facility that was built, uh, for close to three point five billion dollars, sold for two hundred and fifty million naira, oh, sorry, two hundred and fifty million dollars, way below market price. Then we have issues of where, when Niter was privatized, it's only this year we started paying pensioners. So people are saying actually privatization under you was a bit of a mixed bag. It's not this big success that is being touted. What are, what's your response to that?
Well, in, in any policy that you implement, you know, you are bound to find, you know, some, uh, some, some mistakes here and there. But in the overall...
So you admit to mistakes?
Overall, if you look at, if you look at the reform, uh, you know, of our government and also the privatization, you find that it's a huge success. It's a huge success.
What did you do then that you will not do on your second coming? Do you have any regrets? Are there any things that you, when you look back and you think, "Well, I've learned from that and if I come back as president, I will avoid this"?
Yeah, I, I'll give you an example. You are talking about education. You know, when we were in office, we sent a bill to the National Assembly to make education compulsory for every Nigerian child from primary to secondary education. But you know, education is virtually a state and local government affair. And as a result of that legislation, we established UPE and also imposed taxes. And all this revenue is remitted to states and local governments to help educate these poor Nigerians who cannot get, uh, education. Eventually, most of this money was mismanaged at the state level and local government levels. And going through the legislation, I discovered that we made a mistake. And what mistake did we make? We did not have a provision to penalize any level of government, whether it is state or local government if they fail to implement those policies. And I think if I have another opportunity, I will return the law to the National Assembly. I say, "Look, insert a penalty clause where a state is giving money or local government is giving money to invest in education or public education and it decides not to do, we will have the right to penalize or take their money from even the foundation. And, and take and go, and go directly and intervene in the education of those kids." Let me tell you what I did. Let me just give me time.
Two minutes, I have.
No, 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 no.
It's not me, is it?
No, 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 no. When I was vice president, I took a tour to Anambara State. During the administration of Governor Badiniju, I found out the public schools were closed for two years. I came back and met the president. I said, "Mr. President, this governor will never be allowed to go back." He said, "Why?" I said, "I found all the public schools in Anambara State overtaken by which for two years they were not open." Believe me, I made sure Badiniju never went back. This is, let me tell you, this is how I feel about education, you see? But for that education, I will not be what I am today. I, I come from very poor, very, very poor.
A final question for the two of you before we have to go. If you lose elections, will you accept the results?
If the elections are judged to be free, fair and credible, why not? I've lost elections before and I have admitted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peter Obi, Alaji Abubaka. Sadly, we've run out of time and have to leave it here. I want to thank Alaji Atiku Abubaka again and Mr. Peter Obi, the candidates of the PDP. On behalf of the Nigerian Television Authority, Radio Nigeria, Darien Media and the MacArthur Foundation, as well as Plaque, CDD, Sheraton Hotel and all the media houses who aided the candidates, I am wishing Nigeria a peaceful and successful general elections. Please, please go out and vote. Have a good evening.